Welcome, everyone, to the Plastile Planning Board of Wednesday, November 19th. November 18th, sorry, 2020. Our Chair Jim Peck is sick this evening, so he will not be in attendance. Tim Moore, Vice Chair, I'll be running the meeting. And in light of Jim's not being here, I'll appoint Jeff Adams as a voting member. So with all that, Charlene, roll call, please.
All right. Is excused? Excused?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, Tim Moore.
Here.
Lori Molet.
Here.
Erin Robinson.
Here.
Francine Hart.
Here.
Jeffrey Adams.
Here.
Kamal Verdi.
Here.
Greg Kellin.
Here.
John Fuchelle.
Here.
We're here.
Okay, thank you. First item on the agenda is a review and approval of minutes of November 4th. Are there any motions on those minutes?
There is an error that I didn't know under six communications. What was I talking about? Jim has given me the correction since then.
Okay.
But that's why those question marks are in there. And I'm just communicating about it, sorry. So with the correction to that, if there's anything else, I don't know.
Yep, so our attorney's name is Clary. Is there anything other than that correction? So do I have a motion on the minutes? Prove is corrected?
I can rule to do.
Oh, sorry.
To approve the minutes?
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion on the minutes? Other questions? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All of in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Did you appoint me to vote?
Yes.
Tim?
Yeah.
I couldn't hear for sure, I just wanted to confirm.
Okay.
Aye.
And abstentions.
Had to hear with a fan, a motor.
All right, so next item on the agenda is a review of our zoning ordinances. So we have proposed ballot-ready language, which we will review tonight. So the action for tonight is to, if the language is acceptable, either make corrections, if they're minor, send it back for rewording, or if the language looks okay, then the motion would be to post it for the public hearing. So we'll do the first one, Z21-1. Are you in favor of amendment number one as proposed by the Plastile Planning Board to the Plastile Zoning Ordinance Article II definitions as follows. And the amendment is to modify Section 220-2 definitions, the personal service business, by adding the following language. I won't read the full language tonight, but let me just say it was in a footnote in the permitted uses in Commercial One, just proposal is to move it to the definitions. At the public hearing, we will need to read through the whole text as proposed, but we don't need to do that tonight unless there's somebody who wants to do that.
Tim.
Yeah, John.
I have one suggested edit, and it would be the fourth line down midway near the end of the sentence. It reads right now, "Should the site plan be approval?" And I think those words should be changed, "Should site plan approval be granted?"
Yeah, that makes sense.
So you would strike "the" and strike "be."
Yeah.
Okay.
Grammatically correct.
Yeah. The other one, if you go down to the line that says Title 30 of the New Hampshire statutes, I'd like to suggest either statutes be small case, or do we want to make reference to the statutes as the New Hampshire RSAs?
We could find the particular RSA, I guess, and include that in.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just a small concern. I don't think statutes needs to be capitalized, though.
So it should read Title 30 of the New Hampshire RSAs.
And I guess if we want to do that, I guess I'd recommend we'd say, as it says here, "New Hampshire Revised Statutes Annotated," and then put in parentheses, RSA.
Yeah.
I'm having a high time here with that motor up there.
Yeah, I mean, that's what the RSA stands for, Revised Statutes Annotated.
With the lower cases, it's much clearer. New Hampshire is the capitalized item, and statutes are any statute that applies. So I like John's recommendation, just change the capital S to a lower s, and then it reads quite well.
Anything else?
Tim, did you want us to vote on these amendments tonight, or are you going to wait? No.
I don't think we really need a motion, just consensus to post it for the public hearing is good enough. Yeah, John.
Tim, I don't know if you're going to announce this. I had a conversation today with Dee relative to trying to schedule any of these public hearings, and she would prefer, relative to the work that she has to do with these, to schedule them for the second meeting in December. And I think we were going to do that anyway.
Yeah.
So the problem is, you do have to publish them 10 days prior to, and not including the day of publication nor the day of the meeting.
Right, yeah.
So...
That kind of runs into Thanksgiving.
Yeah. But she'll be able to accomplish whatever the board adopts to move forward for public hearings for that second meeting.
Yeah.
She'd be really tight on timeframe for the first meeting.
Yeah, no, that's...
I think that's what we kind of decided.
I think. Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
So Jeff, did you have a question?
No, sorry.
Okay. Yeah, so that December meeting would be the 17th, and the first, I'm sorry, I'm looking at Thursday.
December 3rd, too.
The 16th. And our first meeting in December is December 2nd. So on the 2nd, we would post the ordinances to the, or post them through the public hearing. I guess that would make sense. So we really, I guess we really don't have to do anything tonight except review the language.
Yeah, there's some changes maybe.
Okay, so is there anything else on number one? All right, the second one. Are you in favor of amendment number two as proposed by the Plastile Planning Board to the Plastile Zoning Ordinance Article V Establishment of Districts and District Regulations by adding C1 Danville Road overlay district to Section 228, 220-28, sorry, paragraph A, and by adding following use to 220-32, paragraph B, number 25, function hall. Any comments? Yeah, Lori?
Yeah, in our definitions, I didn't, I couldn't find function hall. And also, are we adding this because is Danville Road overlay in our zoning ordinances right now? Is this, is that why we're adding it? Because it's not in there?
No, it's in, if you look at the C1, paragraph F or something like that is, mentions this Danville Road overlay.
Oh, okay.
It's not mentioned in the list of districts in the, in that first one.
Yeah, all right.
And like all the other districts, it says that the district boundaries are determined by the zoning map.
Okay. But anyways, I, like I said, I couldn't, I don't find that we have function hall as a definition.
Yeah. So, yeah, we should add that. Okay. So if we, yeah, John?
If the board wants to bear with me, I just want to go through that last sentence and propose different wording, if I could. So I'll just go real quick what I'd like to see it read, or how it to read. There are examples of function halls in the C1 district, although none have the phrase "function hall" in their name. And then the next sentence would read, several of the existing restaurants, hold on, who?
Restaurants.
Restaurants, several of these, hold on, several of these existing uses are, I had it down right before I got here. Several of these existing, okay, forget about the restaurants. Several of these existing uses have the capacity to host functions. So that the preceding sentence would read, there are examples of function halls in the C1 district, although none have the phrase "function hall" in their name. Several of these existing uses have the capacity to host functions, or, you know, something to that effect, but I don't know if we even need these two last sentences.
Well, the last two sentences you read, that's something that would be proposed to put in the voters' guide. It wouldn't, wouldn't, the ordinance itself and the language that you would see on the ballot is that first, very first paragraph that started with proposed zoning amendment And then everything on the second page would only appear in the voters' guide.
Tim?
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 Yeah.
Did I hear correctly, that function hall is not defined yet in the definitions?
Yes, that's true.
So effectively, it's like a restaurant. Most restaurants can handle small functions. So is there a confusing, are both of those confusing in terms of the use of the property? If it was a restaurant, would that not also be function hall?
Well...
If it's a standalone function hall that also provides food or has food catered?
Well, the, I guess the, without the, if we don't include this, and somebody comes into the site plan that wants to do a function hall for weddings and graduation parties, there's not necessarily a restaurant attached with that, it's just an empty space that people can meet. And so it's, you know...
Would one need to be defined in the definitions first, what we are calling a function hall?
Right.
And how it described it, and then add this as a use?
Right.
So does it matter that we have a few restaurants that have that capacity? How are we going to stop them from holding functions?
No.
Okay.
This would only occur...
If it was function hall only.
If it was a function hall only.
Okay.
Now, I mean, the thing about restaurants and function halls, if it's a combined use, you have to make sure you have adequate parking for both the restaurant portion and the function portion, but I mean, that's... Okay, so we'll add a definition for that as well. Any other questions, comments? Okay. So consensus to move forward with?
Do we need to provide a definition of a function hall?
We can, I mean, I guess unless somebody has a real crisp, clear definition, I'd rather not kind of stumble over wording tonight. On our December meeting, we can, we'll have the definition that we can modify or...
Tim, just one more comment, and then I'll leave it alone. So the first two sentences to remain the same in the voters' guide information, with the third sentence reading, "This amendment adds a single use," that is, "function hall" "to the list of permitted uses in the Commercial One," in parentheses, "C1 zoning district." And then what I would suggest is strike out the remaining two sentences. Because you're bringing in that, you know...
Yeah, okay.
That is confusing.
Well, you're opining on certain uses that are out there that people might not figure out, but what you're really doing is just allowing for that function hall use by introducing this ordinance.
Yeah.
Leave it at that.
Yeah, so that really should be split into two, with one of them being, add C1 Danville Road overlay into the list, and then a second one providing a definition and permitted use of function hall. Okay, any other comments? All right, I always hate it when we stumble over the first two no brainers. The next one, Amendment Z21-3. Are you in favor of amendment number three as proposed by the Plastile Planning Board to the Plastile Zoning Ordinance Article III General Provisions by adding a new paragraph as follows. Section 220-17.5 Residential Dumpsters. No dumpsters used for residential waste may be placed closer than 10 feet to a sidewalk or bike path or edge of street right of way, and must include visual barriers between the dumpster and sidewalk/bike path/street. Placement of temporary dumpsters used for construction projects is exempted from this ordinance.
In place of barriers, visual screening, or must include screening? Just screening?
Yeah, instead of barriers?
Yeah.
Screening, yeah, okay.
This wouldn't pertain to existing ones that are out there, though, right?
I believe that's true, yes.
Yeah. Too bad, huh? Well, I thought that was the whole intent of bringing this up.
This ordinance shall be retroactive till the year 1950.
Yeah. The only, the only new ordinances that you can implement that become effective is if you're correcting some health or safety problem, and then you...
Well, it could be, it could be health and safety.
I was just going to say, what if we change trash vendors, which we will be doing?
All those dumpsters will be replaced?
Good point.
Well, I guess that would be a new dumpster.
Yes, it would be.
Following in this, if this passes, yeah.
Take care of that.
Problem solved.
Yeah, there you go.
It could also be considered a health issue.
Sure, safety as well.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we have a brand-new code enforcement officer who's excellent, so, yeah, good.
Anything else, any other comments, questions on this one?
Does anybody want me to propose rewording that last sentence? I'd like to, can I?
The placement sentence?
Yeah. So how about this one? The placement of dumpsters used on a temporary basis associated with active onsite construction projects are exempt from this ordinance.
Say that again? Did you write it down? Say that again?
Yeah, I did.
Placement of dumpsters used on a temporary basis...
Associated with active onsite construction projects are exempt from this ordinance. And I emphasize onsite because a lot of people, believe it or not, in what they're up to these days, they're remodeling offsite, and they're putting these dumpsters on their property. And, you know, because they don't have a place otherwise to put them. So they end up becoming somewhat of a permanent fixture on a property and become an eyesore over a longer period of time. So if the construction project's going on onsite, you know, fine, it's a temporary situation, but you can monitor that.
Yeah, okay.
I did write it down, so...
But he's not going to share it with us.
Anything else on the dumpsters?
No.
All right, the next one. Are you in favor of amendment number four as proposed by the Plastile Planning Board to the Plastile Zoning Ordinance Article 10 Home Occupation by adding the Village Center District, VC, to the list of zoning districts that permits certain uses as follows. So the amendment is to modify Section 220-66, paragraph D, permitted uses, by expanding the permitted use districts from ICR and C2 zones to ICR, C2, and, or, sorry, ICR, C2, or VC zones. So ICR is the Integrated Commercial Residential, that's on 108, C2 is Main Street from the Village Center District to Haverhill City Line. So when we added the, split the C2 into, C2 and Village Center districts, we neglected to add VC back to the list where you could do home occupations, is the gist of this. And then also to modify Section 220-67E conditions by modifying the second sentence from, signs will not be lighted from within or by exterior spotlight in residential zones, ICR, MDR, and LDR. Two, signs will not be lighted from within or exterior spotlighting in any zone that permits a home occupation. So instead of trying to list the specific zones, we'll just say, any zone where you have a home occupation, you cannot have a sign that's lighted from within or an exterior spotlight.
Tim, can I be a pain in this one, too? Just to suggest...
Sure.
For both of those sentences.
You get 10 chances in a night, John, in anywhere.
Shoot me, shoot me whenever I get to be too much.
No, go ahead.
I'm suggesting, signs shall not be illuminated, instead of lighted, but signs shall not be illuminated from within or by exterior spotlighting. So "shall," that's more determining, and then illuminated, I think maybe better suited for that sentence. No, that's it.
The next one, Amendment Five. Are you in favor of amendment five as proposed by the Plastile Planning Board to the Plastile Zoning Ordinance Article III General Provisions? Motor vehicle and trailer sales-fee schedule as follows. Modify Section 220-16.C from, as set forth in the Plastile Planning Board fee schedule, to, as set forth in the fee schedule of the Department of Building and Safety. So if you recall, I guess maybe three or four years ago now, it's been a few years, we tried to collect all the places throughout our ordinances and regulations that had mention of some fee, and collect them all in the Plastile Planning Board fee schedule. In doing that, by mistake, we took the fee that was not really planning board related. As the modification says, it's the fee schedule for the Department of Building and Safety. We should have left that one alone and not changed it to Planning Board fee schedule. So this is correcting an error that kind of popped up a couple of years ago.
Tim?
Yeah.
After fee schedule should be a comma, just a correction. In other words, motor vehicle and trailer sales/fee schedule as follows.
Okay.
Instead of it being a fee schedule as follows, that's a little misleading, should be a comma after fee schedule.
Anything else? All right. The next one, number six. Are you in favor of amendment number six as proposed by the Plastile Planning Board to the Plastile Zoning Ordinance Article V Establishment of Districts and District Regulations? Section 220-28 Establishment of Districts Zoning Map by creating a new zoning district, C3, Commercial Three, as shown below. And the, there is a small, yeah, so that was in there more for a placeholder, so we need, you know, before that gets on the... the ballot, we certainly will need to change that.
Could we put a black dot or a red dot or something right where it begins and at the end? Because right now, you're just looking at one, one thing going through. I think people would recognize it better.
Yeah, we'll have to.
Is that all I'm looking?
Yeah, and we need to come up with a better graphic.
Okay, okay.
Like I say, we put, you know, this was easy to just pluck out of the zoning map, so.
No, it was good.
Yeah.
The other thing, I have one thing on this. In our notes from the last meeting we had, we were supposed to try to figure out, you know, some kind of footnote, and you did for the standalone uses, you know, on those buildings here. But the other thing was the storage of equipment vehicles used to service a product. Now, I looked up the definitions, I have also talked to several professionals. There is no way to set that legally in a footnote. So I am going to suggest that that be eliminated. The whole point of the equipment vehicles used to service a product is exactly what I did not want in that section, there's plenty in C1. So I am going to ask to remove that one. I have the definitions right here. If you saw this, building a structure where majority of inside space is used for repair of motor vehicles, including auto body repair, tires, could be another one in there, that is just the part of to service a product. And I, there is no real right way to say that unless it's just eliminated. I never wanted it in there in the first place. That was the whole point. And then when it says vehicular trailer, you know, storage of equipment, you could have sales, you know, recreational vehicles to be stored there, trailers on lots. I just do not want that in that C3, never did. And I think, you know, just we're talking with other people, so I just would like it eliminated.
So if we eliminate that and an electrician rents a space, then all of his trucks that he uses in his business could not be stored on site. He'd have to take them home. And if he lived in Plastow, he wouldn't be able to do that either.
No, on C1, no, that includes anything you want to put in there, tire store, a service station, that is just what we don't.
Alls I'm saying, Karen, is if we eliminate this, we're also eliminating a lot of uses in C3 that are probably fine.
No, that's not what we're saying. If you want us to do a retail business, then you have your cars in front of it. That's exactly what it will be.
Customer cars.
Professional office. You will use the cars that are right there for the professional office. But with this one, you could have a lot of vehicles and you could encourage a tire or service or another gas station there. We don't need it. I mean, it doesn't say anywhere in here if they want to, you know, have a business office or a professional office, that they can't park, that they can't use the cars there. So same with the trade business. If you own that electric, you know, store or plumbing or whatever it is, you're gonna have your cars just there. That's it. There's no encouraging of a whole bunch of them.
In C1, right now, we don't have that wording in C1. And we can see what's out there, and I agree with Karen, I think it should be taken out.
You know how you could deal with this, too? Is that if an applicant comes in and they want to do this, this would be part of a site plan review of this board, but to list it as a use, you're just opening up a can of worms. Because kind of what that says to me is that you can be a contractor and, you know, store all your stuff and, you know, it can get out of hand. I've seen people, you know, if you don't have this prohibition of outside storage of material, you'll have pallets upon pallet stacked, you know, all within visual distance of the passersby. And, you know, it can be unsightly, so that any of these uses are going to propose outside storage of equipment and vehicles associated with their proposed use that come before this board for site plan review. But at that time, that's when we would be privy to what we wanted to do with it. If it's okay but needs to be screened or it needs to have an interior storage capacity rather than these materials being outside in the yard, you know, the whole idea is to make sure it's not visually impacting, you know, the street traffic and just the character and scale of the surrounding area. You know what I'm saying?
All right, so consensus is to strike that?
Yeah, that it's not a use that needs to be listed because those type of uses are going to be introduced with any site plan anyway, and that's when we deal with them. Either a green screening would be involved or, you know, screening from a fence with the slats in them, you know, stuff that better protects the scale and character of the community, you know, rather than just allowing for this outside storage that's in complete view of the people. And it degrades from the aesthetic qualities of the community. You know, we can deal with that on a case-by-case basis when it comes before us, how to best handle what anybody's proposing for a site.
So if you had a business like a, say, a pest end, right? A good Plastow business that wanted to relocate to this district, they still could, correct? We would just be approved in the site plan?
Yeah. I mean, you do want to screen things out that it just, you know, not aesthetically appealing, right? But you may not want to prohibit that use, that insular use of the property. Because, you know, businesses need to have some capacity for storage of vehicles and equipment. They just do, you know, and to properly store them in scale and character and buffer it from view is the way to go. And you can achieve that through site plan review. Everybody happy?
The other, if you look at, on the third page, number seven, maximum building size or multiple businesses are to occupy a single building. Karen, you had, I think, recommended 50,000 square feet.
Yes, yep.
I thought maybe 60 makes a little more sense, since a single building can be 20. So that would, 60 would allow for three buildings rather than like two and a half.
Well, that's, we had a discussion on that number. We said we wanted to cut it down half. It was at 100, I think it was?
Yeah.
So we said we'd put it down to 50, half.
Well, I mean, but that.
We bring it back up to 10 more.
Yeah. I mean, we were talking about the 100, I don't think we were talking about that in relation to the size of a single.
No, no, it was in the three together. Yeah, the three together. When we proposed that, what would happen?
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't, I mean, if the consensus is we want 50,000, that's fine. I just wanted to bring that up, to say 60 might make more sense. That allows you to have three full-size businesses there, but if the consensus is 50, you change it back to 50.
Tim? Yeah, I think that was the intent, was for us to just do basic math and say, three buildings, 20,000 square feet, 60,000 makes more sense than, you know, two, 20,000, and then a 10,000 square foot building. I think that was my understanding of it, is we're just trying to get three buildings of a 20,000 minimum size in there. And with a 50,000 square foot, you're looking at two and a half buildings, and it kind of does make sense.
Yeah, okay.
I don't have a problem with that, but if we want to go back to number three, I'd like to have some clarification. So it says maximum lot coverage, colon, 75%. Is that maximum lot coverage of the building or is that maximum lot coverage of the building and parking area?
Yeah, building and parking, all impervious surface.
Okay, all right.
And that's the same as C1?
I went through a parking lot the other day whereby all these little buildings are being proposed, retail buildings, within the parking lot, as we were talking about the last meeting. And it was dark and I was in a hurry, so I didn't take a picture, but it was the best ill-planning I've seen. It had a yield sign directly in front of a stop sign. This far apart. Never seen something like that before. And the buildings are so close to one another and everything's so tight, there's no pedestrian safety, there's no vehicular safety, it's just, it's mayhem. It's nuts. The only thing it was good for, if it was all pedestrian traffic. But, you know, there's a lot of crazy stuff going on out there.
All right, so 60s, that's fine, okay. Okay, is there anything else on the, did we agree with the vehicle trips? Because that's a lot, but.
Yeah, that was actually what, when it was done, was done 10 years ago, when we were looking at the big stores, so, so in there. So that was the figure they came up with, 5,000 vehicle trips per day. I don't know, it's really.
What would you reduce it to?
I was, I mean, I think that you guys maybe have a little bit more experience than I do. I just remember that in our discussion, that was a carryover, it was late in the evening. I think we didn't really discuss it in too much detail.
No.
So if the intent is to limit the traffic flow to a certain degree, maybe we can tweak that?
I don't think you would have any argument with a developer with that type of traffic count associated with the maximum amount of 60,000 vehicle trips, because, say, a 100,000 square foot Walmart, Super Walmart, that can draw, easily draw that type of traffic.
Right, and that's.
But, you know, we're getting rid of the big box retailers because the maximum building size is gonna be 20.
Right.
And, you know, if this goes along at 60,000 square feet, that site, I can't imagine those smaller uses like that attracting 5,000 vehicles per day.
We didn't discuss that.
You may get an argument with the developer with 2,000 vehicle trips per day associated with that site, you know, a site of that size, but 5,000, they'd say, oh, great, you know, we can, you know, we have three little mini Walmarts in here.
Seems like the changes will take care of the trips.
Yeah.
Unless something that we haven't considered goes in there. Yeah, a COVID tent.
I would say you'd be, I don't even think a contractor, I mean, a developer would argue with 3,000 vehicle trips a day associated with 60,000 max. I mean, that's still a lot of traffic. You just figure, up here, if Walmart wasn't on 125 where it is, and, you know, you had Home Depot, they're a traffic generator, but only certain days of the week, really. And, but everything except for Walmart there, all that square footage that is up there that would exceed 60,000, I don't think you'd have more than, I don't think you'd have more than 2,000 or 3,000 tops going to that site. But because Walmart's there, you know, they, that site does, that whole building envelope on that property probably exceeds 5,000 every day of the week. Do you think?
Yeah. So are you suggesting that we could lower it to 3,000 without any ill effects?
Yeah, I mean, that's being realistic. 5,000 is just like.
I would go along with that.
Okay, that sounds good.
You guys okay with that?
Yep, that's exactly good.
Even, you know, just for example's sake, those Costco's, they do generate a lot of traffic and the other ones like that, but nothing on scale of what a Super Walmart does.
Right, well, that's what we were.
Trying to avoid.
Where do we have a pot store?
Oh, please.
It's way over, fact over.
Yeah, but nobody will care.
It's not in the permitted use here, so.
Oh, yeah, all right.
The supermarkets, you know, large supermarkets, they probably generate per square foot, you know, as much traffic as any use out there. But, you know, those big supermarket chains, they're all doing over 60,000 square feet, so you're not going to, you're gonna have a Trader Joe's, something like that, maybe a small Whole Foods, whatever, but.
Yep.
Some real busy.
A restaurant, even, you know, that size, too.
And again, trying to downsize this transition area outside of the maximum.
Maximum down here.
Zoning district of which C1 is. You know, you're not doing away with anything that's going on down there now, size-wise, there's nothing being proposed. I think everybody agrees to what is going on out there and, you know, from here on out, that will be, you know, the main revenue producer for the community as it continues to, you know, redevelop or develop. For this district, this new district, you know, we're trying to transition out of that high, that high caliber, high-density development area. On that note, did everybody hear about the development in the budding community to the north, 800,000 square feet?
Was that in legendary?
No, Kingston.
Kingston.
On 125.
Yep.
It was a regional, she's in growth, a regional impact Zoom meeting this week, I attended it. And they're scoping out, it's an 800,000 square foot warehouse distribution. It's five miles south of Route 101. So it's really oriented to the Route 101 corridor, you know, going east and west, north and south along that corridor. So it's five miles south of 101, it's 12 miles north of.
Plastow.
Of 495. So, and, you know, when you're looking at the breakdown of traffic, you know, I think a lot of, you know, especially the larger trucks, they're not gonna want to come through here when they're on, you know, 101.
101.
And they're trying to get to 95 or they're trying to get to 93 in order to get to 495. I mean, that's the big truck group. It's coming down 95, 101, they shoot over to 93, they can go up 89 if they're heading in that direction, or they're going down to 495 to Connecticut, New York, and point south and west. But it was interesting to, you know, sit in on the meeting in, you know, a very large facility. It was actually advertised for 80,000 square feet, but it was 800,000.
800?
With 180, I think it's near 180 overhead doors.
There's only certain companies that are looking for that right now?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. The economy is transforming. I think it was set up with electric plugins for all the autonomous trucks that are on the horizon.
Wow.
Just as a sidebar.
Anything else on the C3?
That was it. Thank you very much. And that was it. Thank you.
If you ring through these and you. If you ring through these and you find something in the voter's guide that could be better clarified or added to or taken away from, let us know.
Second to last page. C, uh, C1 mixed-use overlay, not overlay district.
Is it spelling, where is it? Oh, yeah, L A Y.
Did it slip?
Yeah.
Oh.
What was that?
Yeah, the missing Y. All right. So the last one is the C1 overlay district.
I think we went over this one pretty, pretty well the last time.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments?
Tim, you have three asterisks there, need to check post office requirements for delivery.
Oh, yeah.
Private roads. Also went to maintenance standards.
So if the, if the road, kind of a, I guess what I had in, in mind, if the layout included a, like a perimeter road around the exterior, and that's a private road, like your expectation would be in a, one, one, commercial, one area. What, I guess I need to find out about post office deliveries because if we, say the development included fifteen apartments in the, in a fairly big, I don't want fifteen mailboxes on one twenty-five. Or, or even, I'm sure they wouldn't put them on one twenty-five. But I don't want them, as you turn into this private road, wind up there either. Because, I mean, that would be, you know, terrible. So I don't know what their, what their guidelines are. But if their guidelines are that they would not deliver unit by unit, then, I don't know. Either scratch the whole thing or, or make it a public road.
I was just going to say, through site plan review, when we're going through it, if there is an issue that we have to determine how mail is going to be properly delivered, you know, a lot of times that comes out with the site plan itself. And the developer's usually proposing, you know, a centralized area.
Where they all are.
Yeah, and you pull over, you know, parking spaces, so they own, they have their own little mini post office.
Yeah.
So that's a, that's something to keep in mind when, whenever we're reviewing projects like that. You know, and usually the post office is working with the developer because they're not delivering door to door.
Yeah.
In a multi-residential development. They, they go to one central place and they put everything in the slot. It's the, the overnight delivery guys that, not so much knock on your door, but just throw it at your door. And you got to hope for the best.
Yeah.
Hope it doesn't rain that night.
Okay, so we can just strike that and handle that with site plan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I saw one place where they did just do some new ones and they had a big, beautiful, like, house. It was almost like the roof and everything and it, it had them really, pretty easy to just stick in each one for about twenty-five places. And so on their way in, they just stop, get them out and then they go.
Yeah.
I don't know where the packages go, but, I, some of them are real nice, front signs and things right there for them.
Yeah.
Tim?
Yeah.
Does an overlay district have to be defined by the developer or can it be defined by the board, planning board? I had a time.
There's. I think for, like, mail delivery, we could make, if the, if the, if what the post office will allow is for one central place for everyone's mail to be, or even two, then we could probably say, as part of site plan review, that you, you had to build some kind of shelter so you weren't standing in the middle of a rainstorm trying to fish out your mail out of a mailbox.
That wasn't quite the question I was asking, was the overall concept of an overlay district. Is that proposed by the developer or can it be predefined by the planning board? For example, we see a port, a certain portion of our C1 area that might be ideal for this. Can we go ahead and define that and then allow developers to come in and develop on that? Or is it always done by the developer, they, they decide they want to do an overlay district?
Yeah, I, I think they would, in this case, I'm glad you brought that up, I had that, kind of that same question. If they want to develop or redevelop, you, using the uses and whatever in the overlay district, they could declare that, saying we're going to do that. I don't think we could force them to do it. And if they want to do the regular C1 development, that, that would be an option. But they would have to choose. So somewhere probably in this, in this language, we would need to say that, that it's developer's option to.
Yeah, so in, in this opening paragraph, it will have to include language to the effect that this overlay district shall be exclusive to the C1, the existing C1 zoning district. That's the only place you could propose these uses.
Right.
So the, the town through the ordinances is dictating, it's, it's only within that C1 zoning district. And this is, this is an overlay of that, that particular district. And only these proposed uses with these permit requirements can be proposed in that district. So you can't go to C3, you can't go over to C2 with it. It's an overlay district specific to the existing C1 zoning district.
It says that right now.
It does, yeah.
Yeah.
You just want to make sure.
Can an overlay district?
Yeah, like you're, you're asking, can we go other places? No, this is an overlay district.
I was thinking more in terms of where in C1 we would, might want to consider having these uses applied.
Yeah, what it's restricted to is the size, you know, the size of the lot for a proposal. You know, the minimum lot size is four hundred and twenty square feet or, you know, roughly ten acres of land, which is typical.
Does an overlay district typically always include new uses? Or can an overlay district be where you're taking away uses?
Can, it can be both.
Can be both, okay.
Yeah, yeah, because what you can't do with an overlay district or what's not practiced, because it wouldn't be an overlay district, it would be its own district. But you can't, you, you can't say to a developer, this is all you can do. No, the, the underlying district, the C1 district and all the uses that are allowed, the ones that are prohibited, those remain the same and a developer can do, or can, can propose a development in accordance with those allowances. This is like a bonus allowance. Overlay districts are, are for, you know, bigger projects, typically for bigger projects that need to consolidate land within that zoning district. There's major, major investment dollars involved. And what they usually do is first come in with a conceptual to see if the town wants something like that. And, you know, so it does allow for, you know, say visionary-type developments to come in and present them and get a feel of whether they're going to be acceptable or not before spending, you know, big dollars in design and engineering plans.
Thank you, thank you, Tom.
Yeah, it is definitely a multi-step process, multi-review process, starting with conceptual, going to preliminary design into, you know, final design. But they only go, they only progress as what the town's willing to, you know, go along with. Nobody wants to, nobody starts off thinking that they're going to have to litigate.
Until they have to.
Until they do, yes.
Until they doubt it.
Okay, anything else on zoning?
The only thing I would add is, is there, did I miss a voter's guide commentary on this last one?
Did you miss a what? I'm sorry.
Voter's guide.
Some voter's guide commentary?
Oh. Uh, no, you didn't miss it, it's not there.
I'm missing it.
So, yeah, that needs to be added.
Tim, get on that. Yeah, fine. We'll wait to critique, critique later.
Yes. The other thing that, when, when we started to propose the C3 district, we used the Arabic three, I guess, rather than a Roman three. I would like to change all of the zoning districts' numbers to Arabic instead of Roman. You know, I don't think we have to go to town meeting, it's just a format change. We can just do it if the, if that's the consensus.
The Roman numerals, one, two.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That makes sense.
You want to stay with Roman numerals or you want to go to?
Yeah, I don't want to stay with Roman numerals.
You don't want to stay with Roman?
I do not want to stay with Roman numerals.
You, you want to stay with Roman numerals?
No.
No, you don't, okay.
Oh, that's what I thought you meant, too.
That's what I thought you said, yeah.
Do I keep one, two, and three?
Yeah.
I thought you were suggesting.
I mean, if we were, if we're going to stick with Roman, then, you know, you have C3, you have the, the number three. If we were going to stick with Roman, that would be C I I I.
I I I.
Yeah. And, you know, industrial.
Leave it where it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it needs to be consistent across the board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
So, I mean, it doesn't, well, like, it doesn't, I don't have real strong thoughts. I would prefer not to continue with Roman numerals. But if the consensus is to stick with them, then that's fine.
I don't know if I really want to do away with the Romans.
Probably American numbers than Roman numerals.
Yeah, that's what I think.
What was that, Greg? I missed that.
I was saying that American numbers are, are, you know, digits versus Roman numerals. It's a lot easier to see and a lot easier to recognize.
Yeah, the only place Roman numerals belong is on Super Bowls.
Yeah, but they, they, they're very, yeah, I mean, they're universally used in statutes.
That's true.
And they're not about to be, and, and that's why they're still in zoning ordinances. I only like them because it makes people think a little bit more, you know?
Yes, what is nine?
Yeah, I mean, once you get up to certain numbers, it's like, oh, X, X, uh, one.
L V I.
Whatever the heck that means.
Yeah.
But, I mean, if we, if we're doing anything, if we have, if we make people think, you know, actually make them think, we're doing something good. You know?
Some, some.
You know, people trying to, you know, especially, you know, anybody under twenty.
They don't know those.
Able to tell time by using a clock would.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
And they would never know what quarter.
Yes.
Quarter of this means, half past this and, you know.
Writing directions in person.
Yeah.
It's quarter, it's quarter to twelve, what's that mean?
I don't say that way on my digital watch.
Half past.
All right. So when we.
Code.
Whatever gets passed at town meeting, when we do the zoning ordinance update, then we'll change. Be consistent. All right, okay, so no other, any other thoughts on zoning?
I'm for keeping the Roman numerals for all it's worth. Cause I'm looking, I'm looking at one document here, it says Article Three, that's in, you know, Article Three. So commercial, commercial one.
All of the zoning articles are all Roman numerals.
I think it looks classy.
But, uh.
The zones are different, that's what you're saying.
Well.
I'm just trying to be difficult.
Yes, I know. Although we, Conservation Commission, I think I mentioned before, is looking to establish prime wetlands. So there'll be a, I think, two, at least one zoning article. Well, to see if the town will vote to adopt the prime wetlands. And then a corresponding change to our wetlands ordinance to make sure there are no conflicts. So the guy that we're working with, Mark West, will be at the December HONCOM meeting, which is first Thursday in, in December. I would think he's supposed to have something ready that, that night. So there, I mean, there isn't too much time. But anyway, in, in researching other towns' wetlands ordinances, the two that he recommended, neither of those had Roman numeral article numbers. So I think people are drifting away from them. I mean, the, you know, one to ten is easy, but when you get to twenty-seven or something, you know, then you, you need to scratch your head a little bit to, anyway.
Tim, on that prime wetland.
Yeah.
Issue? There is a lot to it and it's nothing to be brushed over. When I was in Hudson, we had a hundred thousand dollar plus study done because Conservation Commission had money set aside that, you know, they were entrusted with. And so they went ahead with the hundred thousand dollar study. The volume, there were two volumes this thick that resulted, everything was CAGRized, photographed, you know, to the nth degree, the whole town, thirty square miles. And they never went beyond the publication, it never was enacted.
Oh, my gosh.
Because Salem did it and it's very restrictive to communities. It's very restrictive to one's property and what one can use their property for and stuff. So it's, it's a big to-do for a community. And it, and it does impose a lot more restrictions that are, than exist today in regard to wetlands and wetland buffers. So it's nothing to be brushed aside or not really delved into because it is a big to-do.
All right, good to know.
I think our town, town manager may have some verbiage to lend to the subject matter also because he is from Salem. And he did work with me in Hudson for a while. And it was sad to see so much work just go to waste, that, that's the bottom line. It was, it was an incredible inventory and it took several, more than several years and a, a team of professionals to do and just for it to end up not being adopted. That was kind of sad, you know, but that's what happens. You know, you can't, if you don't get everybody on board. You can't, if you don't get everybody on board with the idea and understanding it, you know, you could be spending a lot of money and then it doesn't pass muster with the voters or it doesn't go anywhere. So, just words of experience.
Yeah. Anything else on zoning? Okay. So next item on the agenda is a bond reduction for Carly's Way. I think that in your package have the information. Staff is recommending the bond be reduced by $178,000, leaving a bond of $45,250 per recommendation of Keach Nordstrom Associates. So does anyone have any questions on the bond reduction or ready to make a motion? There is a draft motion at the bottom of the first page. Yeah, Karen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I move that bond being held for the 14 lock subdivision known as Carly's Way be reduced by 178,918.75, leaving a bond of $45,250 for the recommendation of Keach Nordstrom Associates.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Jeff, did you do the second?
Second.
Yeah, okay. Uh, okay. Any, any discussion on the motion? Call for a vote then. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstaining? All right. That's, that's all I have. Is there, Karen?
Yep.
Uh, there was one thing, I, I don't know if this comes under new business or not. The Heritage Commission was brought up to the Selectment, right?
Yes.
Okay. There was one thing that I noticed that they were asking a lot of questions about. The idea of the Heritage Commission is not like a historical building or historic site. And I just kind of wanted to just review what it actually says. It is offered as a means for municipal governments in New Hampshire to manage, recognize and protect the historical and cultural resources. We're not there, they are not there to tell the people like in historic district where you are told what the windows have to be, what the door has to be, what the building has to be. They're there there to, the range of their activities is non-regulatory. And I think some people misunderstood that or a lot of people something else.
So, so as a comment to that, I think I'd ask Jim to come to our November 30th meeting to clarify, but the issue that we have, and I'm going to quote you on a statute, it says, "A heritage commission can accept and expend funds for non-lapsing heritage funds, acquire and manage property and hold preservation easements." That was a sticking point that we were concerned about because I think the whole board was very supportive of preserving historical buildings and sites. We just want to know the extent of the authority. And I think that needs to be in the charter and it needs to be very clear as to what it is. And I think that's where the issue was with the board. And Greg, if you want to jump in, I think that was the sticking point.
Right. No, I, that's what I thought. I, I just didn't want people to think though that it was restrictive either if, if you did join and refund and funding for it was just an option. You do not have to do that. We're trying to find people.
Yeah, but anyway, someone's going to, it's either, it's either going to be Jim and I think he's going to be in California that time. So it will either be him or he said, perhaps Mark Foyne's from the Historical Society may be present and he can let me know about that, you know, right before the meeting, but that is on our agenda.
Okay.
All right. And along with new business, Tim, I just wanted to remind everybody that Hoyle Tanner was looking for either a volunteer or representative to be on the task force for the traffic calming study and he asked for a person from the planning board. And I believe if no one has objections, Tim expressed an interest in being the representative for, for your board. So if there is no objections with the rest of the board, I'll make sure that Hoyle Tanner has his name and his email address, if that's okay with you guys. Yes? Yes. Okay. Tim, you're it. Tag, you're it.
All right. Anything else?
Nope.
All right. We will adjourn at 7:50. 7:48.